I'd like to open the Monday, June 15th, regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission. And as is our custom, as Commissioner Jaworski just said, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. And the public may comment on any matter except what's on the agenda today because it's already gone to public hearing, the record has been closed. And so if you have something else you'd like to speak to us about, you're welcome to. Because we're in deliberations, we cannot accept any more testimony. So with that, would anyone like to speak to us? Okay. All right. Well, with that, we will move on to Agenda Item Two, which is our South Willamette Special Area Zone, beginning of our deliberations. We will be deliberating today, and we also have scheduled July 6th. And I'll just maybe turn it over to Gabe and let you introduce Jennifer and Will, and we'll get started.
Thanks. So as you know, the focus of today's meeting is to begin our deliberations on the South Willamette Special Area Zone. We held a public hearing on June 2nd, and following the hearing, we kept the record open for a week until June 9th to allow for additional written testimony. You should have all received a full packet of the testimony. I also have a hard copy here today if we need to look at any of that more specifically. But to help with today's meeting, staffs provided sort of a summary of key deliberation topics, at least to get things started. The hope was to sort of hit upon some of the key areas of testimony and concerns the commissioners have raised to date, and really sort of get through some of the bigger topics today, recognizing that there are a number of property-specific issues and other details that have been raised. We'll, time permitting, hopefully, get to that either toward the end of the meeting or at our second deliberations meeting. And I'd also like to welcome Jennifer Knapp and Will Doughty here to help carry the conversation and answer questions that you might have today. So as you've seen in the packet, we've sort of organized the key topics according to residential zones, and I think what we'll start with is the East 23rd Avenue area. We also heard a fair amount of testimony about the Portland Street Cascade Manor area. We'll talk about that today. And the residential area just north of 29th Avenue, particularly High Street. And then from there, we'll talk about some of the alley access concerns we've heard about, and finally, parking requirements. We did include a brief item at the end of the packet about some of the general clarifications or corrections. I think as we move along, staff recognizes there are a few of those that have been raised. It may not really involve a policy choice, but something we wanted to kind of alert you to, things that we intend to fix essentially or correct along the way. So really, just to provide some examples of that. So to start, I think we can just dive right in. As we heard in testimony at the hearing and quite a few written pieces of testimony, there are some concerned residents along East 23rd, just off of Willamette Street there, dead-end street section that is primarily single-family residential. It's zoned R1 currently, but I think one of the key considerations that we looked at in developing the proposal for this area was the fact that it's long been designated for medium-density residential development. And that really hasn't been realized for any re-zonings. It still retains its single-family character, and we've heard a fair amount of concern about the height limits in particular, the five-story height limit in that area. The proposal is to essentially upzone it to the apartment condo sub-district. And that, as you may note in the maps with today's packet, is sort of consistent with the abutting areas, both the five-story limit and the apartment condo sub-district. So in effect, it is upzoning the area, but at the same time, it's resolving an existing plan zone conflict. And so that was a factor, at least, in the proposal that we've included in the code to date. So in your packet, we have proposed some options. These certainly aren't intended to be exhaustive, but really help provide some sideboards or a framework for your discussion, and hopefully, some possible changes or revisions we might make to the adoption package that would help respond to the testimony we've heard. One of those, I mean, just essentially to begin with, would be to leave the proposal as it is. Another option may be to lower the height limit for that area from five to three-story to help address some of the concerns we've heard about development intensity and the impact. But it really, I don't think would fundamentally address the concerns of folks that this area might transform to a multifamily character from what it is today. Another option that I think is possible would be to look at this for the single-family options sub-district, possibly with the rowhouse allowance to allow some higher level of density than exists under the current designation, but to really bring it down from what it's proposed at currently. The apartment condo sub-district would allow for a density of 20 to 56 units per acre, which is comparable to the R3 zone. But the sort of middle option here, if you will, at three stories would help to temper that, the possible maximum density that you might see there. So again, just a range of options you might consider. It's not intended as exhaustive, and I thought as we sort of touch on each of these key topic areas, we could do a round of discussion, and-
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Sure. Open it up. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have Commissioner Mills in the queue.
I'd like to open with a question. It's a kind of fundamental. It's more of a history question to help me figure out where I am on this. It has to do with how did the conflict come about between the plan and the zoning? In other words, we have, the existing metro plan shows this, I believe, as MDR, and the zone for a lot of these properties is R1. There's a few R2s I haven't heard.
Yeah.
And I wonder, and if this can't be answered this time, I understand, but I'd like to understand the genesis of the conflict.
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, what happened first or second? Were the R1s in existence before the MDR and the plan came into existence?
Yeah.
Chicken and egg kind of a thing. I'd like to understand that.
Sure.
And I'll qualify this. I understand staff's normal position and direction and advice to us is that the plan rules, but I want to understand how the conflict came about.
Yeah. It's a very good question, and I think it's something that everyone should recognize is that we have a number of these situations throughout town. It's a fairly common occurrence that we would have properties that are, for example, zoned R1 but designated for a higher intensity of use. And so we see incrementally throughout town a variety of individual zone changes as property owners elect to redevelop and bring the property into conformance with the existing adopted plan. But to your question about the history of this, I haven't done exhaustive research on the genesis of it, but my understanding is that this has been designated MDR since the inception of the metro plan. So for 30-plus years, it's been designated, and at that time, it was zoned R1 as it is currently. And so this condition, if you will, it's persisted since the beginning of our adopted plan for the area. And it's just a matter of, I think, property owner preference and the character of the area that it hasn't changed.
So, Gabe, just a quick follow-up then. I'm not wanting to put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing is that it was R1 at the time the plan was created.
Yes.
So R1 predates MDR despite the fact that the plan rules.
Right.
And I guess, you know, I'm kind of putting myself in the typical property owner's book, which I more or less am, and, you know, most property owners might know what their zoning is if they're paying attention. But knowing what their plan designation is may be something that they're not as aware of.
Right.
You've answered my question.
Okay.
Commissioner Baker?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. Based upon western commercial neighborhood developments, we regularly see 54 units per acre in a three-story building. So again, I don't see any, so I wanted to mention that, that that does not, you know, we regularly see developments that hit 54, and what is this allowed, a 56 and five stories? So we regularly see that hit in a three-story building. So, you know, just so it's clear that building height, you know, you can achieve high density without going into large buildings. And I had asked, I'll mention, we had asked some questions at the May 18th meeting about some of these issues that haven't been brought back to us yet. I'm assuming that that will happen at the next meeting. But one of those was the access for the, I asked specifically about the access for that street because it's a one-way street that has no access and will probably never have any access on Amazon.
You mean a dead-end street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a dead-end street. And the access along Willamette is of a concern as well because it's one block away from the intersection. That's not a, that section of Willamette already has some access issues, and so the idea of increasing, you know, depending on the zone designation versus the plan designation, increasing the development there could exacerbate existing access issues. And I know we've sort of put aside traffic and those sorts of things, but I'm a little concerned that we can be creating bottlenecks that would prevent this from being used even effectively as a bus route, you know, if we're introducing some problems where, you know, people are turning left, you know, or turning left onto that street from the north, or turning left out of that street, going south, you know, where we create some real bottlenecks. It's a one, it's through one lane, you know, just one lane in each direction there. It's already collapsed from where it was farther down to the north. So, you know, the response, you know, just what is our take on the impact of congestion at that intersection? And actually, I think one of the other commissioners who's more experienced with traffic issues would probably be able to comment on that as well, so.
I would only add that that's definitely a concern we've heard in the testimony, in addition to the question from our earlier meeting. We haven't, I think, studied the direct impacts on that one intersection in any great detail, but I think it's certainly a factor for the commission to consider as we look at the level of development intensity, considering it is a dead-end street, that it is unlikely that it would be continued as a through street, given the proximity to the 24th Avenue intersection on Amazon Parkway. So I guess I'll just leave it at that in terms of it being a factor in your policy choice about what level of density this segment of street could handle.
I have myself in the queue, and then Commissioner Jaworski. And I think my, I'll write that down so I don't forget. I think my question's similar to Commissioner Baker's, I think with the traffic concerns with high-density residential and the amount of density that is possible there, I think my concerns are whether that, short of a dead-end street, can really handle that with the intersection. And I think there's, you know, there's some uniqueness about that street that doesn't occur on any of the other South Willamette areas, just because 24th connects through, 24th Place connects back around, so at each end, and I think all of the other streets, you've got some options to where you can go and not just come back out to Willamette. And so I think that makes that area a little more unique. I guess my question would be on the single-family options. How do the heights and densities compare with that compared to the high-density residential? Remind us.
Well, and-
I don't have mine right in front.
Jennifer, feel free to jump in. You're more familiar with the SFO district than I am, but there are really two options there. I mean, within the SFO sub-district, we also have the rowhouse-allowed component of that. So each of those has a different density range. The typical SFO sub-district without rowhouse allowances is up to 14 units per acre. So it's essentially consistent with low-density residential. That would be a policy shift from the current designation of MDR. But when we look at the rowhouse allowance as an overlay for the SFO options sub-district, it would enable a density range of four to 20 units per acre. So it's, at least in a way, it overlaps the existing MDR designation. So if you'll recall, the new low-to-medium residential plan designation that we're creating is specific to the RA sub-district, and that might be an option for this to allow kind of a compromise in terms of the density allowed. And in looking at the pattern of the existing lot configuration, you know, and sort of back to Commissioner Baker's concern about larger projects or, you know, the density that could be allowed, I think that lot configuration will have a lot to do with the development potential over time. I mean, if we look at this as a long-term strategy and given the way that things tend to happen incrementally, it might be that the rowhouse allowance is a good option, the way they, the lots are configured, at least on the south side with an alley with a fairly, you know, well, typical lot size with frontage facing 23rd and the depth there, it might actually work fairly well for rowhouses. So just some thoughts there.
And then just kind of a follow-up to that. I think my, thank you for the information on the single-family options, and even with rowhouse, though, the maximum on that is still only 20.
Right.
Where the MDR is 28. And so that would result in lowering-
Right.
-the plan designation density. So I have, I think, some concerns there, although the 65-foot height limit, I can certainly understand not wanting to-
Right.
-have your house right next to a 65-foot height, potentially 65-foot height building.
Sure.
So that's kind of where I'm struggling, I think, with a little bit with, you know, what the neighbors' concerns are and then what we're trying to achieve in this area.
Part of our thought in looking at these options too, on the part of staff, is really looking at the development pattern in a very long-term view. And while changing the height limit maybe three stories wouldn't affect the uses and the, you know, development type so dramatically, the shift to single-family options would. And I think we'd need to look closer at what that sort of inconsistency with the other existing, well, the impacts from higher-density development directly adjacent to it with the five-story just to the north and AC sub-district surrounding it, so.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Just a couple of clarifications. We're talking East 23rd. When I look at the handout, there's these red lines only around the small lots. Is that all we're considering in this proposal? Is just within that red line?
Well, so that box is really intended to focus your attention on lots where we've received very specific testimony from owners. And so looking at the plan designations for the area and the testimony we've heard, you know, we would recommend that you focus on those lots in particular, but not to say that you're bound by that.
So when the options are presented below, and let's just say like Option 2, and they're saying to go from five to three, it's that whole block of five north and south of 23rd or just within the red lines that that option is?
Well, the intent was really to focus the options on the area within the red box that's indicated there. And I think another factor, if you look at the current zoning map that we provided, that is the area that is existing R1 zoning. To the north, you have general office zoning, which is a much more intensive commercial zoning district. And then to the south, you have existing R2 zoning and some R3, actually. So it's really focused on that pocket of existing R1 that still has a single-family character.
I have a right, I mean, it's not, okay. Under Option 2, if something was three stories, under the design review, is there flexibility for that to go higher?
No, there is not.
There's no flexibility.
No. Again, just to reiterate that-
You can do higher.
Go ahead.
You do have some flexibility for height as if you have some other option, you know, take some other options like open space.
That's what I thought that. I just wanted to be clarified because the wording under Option 1 was five-story height limit, where the other was three-story maximum.
Oh.
And I thought you did that deliberately-
No.
-because the option wouldn't apply.
The word choice there wasn't deliberate in terms of any nuance we intended there. I do want to clarify, though, that my understanding is design review doesn't just open it wide open for possible higher building height, but that there are codified options built in, in some cases. Is it a density or height bonus?
There are height bonuses in the building height section. So for all of the mixed-use zones and all of the apartment condo zones, there's an allowed height bonus for open space, and there's a table in the code that clarifies those.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's a codified standard rather than a design review standard. There's no discretion within the design review process to increase heights beyond what's allowed in the code standards.
And is it true that the SFO sub-district does not have those same allowances for a bonus? Yes?
No, yeah, there's no bonuses in the SFO.
So just to clarify, there are not height bonuses embedded within the code for the SFO sub-district, where there are for AC sub-district and mixed-use, so.
And just finally, so if I understand what you're saying, even if other options were chosen, it would only be within that red zoned area, and it would still be surrounded by five-story buildings?
At least as we proposed it for today's discussion. Again, that's not intended to limit the conversation to only that area, but as we look at that pocket, I do think it's important to consider its relationship to the abutting zones. And that's something that we haven't thought through in any great detail as to transitions. I mean, if we were to move it all the way down to a lower density, that would be a concern in terms of its adjacency to much higher impact. And one of the things we want to be careful about is the ripple effect of looking at each individual pocket area. I know we've heard some significant testimony about it, but in terms of the long view here, we do want to try to maintain some consistency and commonality between the development types where there are budding.
And then finally, if either a different option for that red area was selected, either two, three, or something else, does that mean the five stories surrounding them, would they be subject to step downs, or would they not based on that zone that it's adjacent to?
That sort of consideration would require the planning commission to discuss and make some policy choices. We'd also, I think if there's, you know, clear direction from the commission that we want to move that way, we would have to evaluate that, and I'd recommend we come back with some proposals for how we might consider those edges, you know, the transition. But again, that ripple effect, I mean, I think what we'd be looking at is expanding height transitions and limiting development potential moving out from that. It's something that we'd have to look at much more closely to come back with some specific proposals.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Taylor, then Commissioner Baker, then Mills.
Commissioner Randall, I just have a question in terms of, or staff, what the objective is today in terms of, are we, do you want us to actually make motions at each segment, or are we waiting to make decisions for the second deliberations?
I think I would like to have at least a consensus, not necessarily, I don't know that we need a motion unless we're changing something. Would we need a motion, or?
I don't think we need formal motions at this point, while it might help us completely dispense with the item and move on to the next. I think what we would, at a minimum, like coming out of today's meeting, is a sense of the commission's direction, at least a majority of the commission, as to a preferred option. And, you know, recognizing some of these are pretty significant policy choices, we may need to come back at our next meeting with, you know, a final resolution of that. But for each topic, Commissioner Taylor, we would like to get a sense of each commissioner's leaning.
Okay.
Maybe a straw poll or something like that, and then we can move on to each additional topic.
Okay, great.
Okay. Is that it that you had for?
Yeah, that was the last question.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
A couple of points I'd like to make. One is the metro plan designations are general, and they don't line up with our, I mean, they've never lined up with our zoning, R1 to R4, traditional zoning we've had. So there's always a range because it means that when this was re-designated, it wasn't designated to mean that it should have 28. It means that the zone designation for that area should fall somewhere within the range. So I don't have any, personally, I don't have any problem with choosing some proposed zone change that fits within that range because that's exactly what the metro plan designation is there for. Again, if in the future we realigned our plan designations with our zoning, you know, numbers, then that would be something different, but that's not what we've ever done, so it's just a range. Regarding the, I also wanted to make the point that we've got an awful lot of testimony from the, these inhabitants in this area, and particularly, you know, these are lower-cost homes, you know, more affordable housing. I think the point was made that we didn't impose these zone changes on the area west of Willamette where the houses are more expensive, and that does concern me from a social justice And I wanted, a question of staff, my understanding is if this was changed to, say, one of the SFO zones, we already have in place transitions, height transitions between these other zones, AC and SFO, as I recall, that we have built into the code.
You want to speak to it?
That's correct, but we, what would change is that it would have an impact on its surroundings, where if it was zoned for apartment condo, it wouldn't impact its surrounding zones.
Right, but it's only a certain distance away from the property line. It's not the entire property. It's just first 30 feet.
It would have transition standards.
Yeah, whatever it is, 30 feet or 25 feet. So it's not like we've limited the development dramatically on some of these other areas. And the other thing I wanted to point out is I had specific concerns about some of those exemptions in the AC zone for open space that seemed a bit open-ended, and you could add a small amount of open space and sort of recruit more. I don't want to discuss it now, but we have, there's a lot of detailed code language that we need to review because there are, some of us have concerns about some of these things. And I want to make sure that we have time, not today, but before, you know, a decision is made, a recommendation is made-
Yeah.
...to go through those. Otherwise, I don't really think we're doing the diligence enough.
And to be clear, that is our intent. In particular, one of the topics that you've raised, Commissioner Baker, is the open space exemption for multifamily, and we do want to bring that back for a more robust discussion, perhaps not in the key topic area here, but it is one that cuts across quite a wide swath, you know, in terms of the AC sub-district and mixed-use. So we'll bring that back for the next meeting.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I guess I'll start off with giving you a sense of where we are. Given how the genesis of the conflict began, given also that the plan designation is being upzoned from MDR to HDR in this area, I'm inclined to err on the side of lower density in the name of fairness and social justice here for these folks. I'm not married to any one designation yet, right off the top, SFO, RA perhaps, or perhaps a lower height designation. I'm a little concerned about going apartment condo because these folks will then be subject to some big transition issues perhaps. We could talk about that in my mind, you can use, but that's where I'm leaning right now, is lower density for this area in some form or another.
I have myself in the queue, and then Commissioners Duncan and Taylor. On the current zoning map-
zoning map, is it, am I correct that that one westmost lot next to the GO zone, is that zoned currently R3?
Yes.
Okay. And then all of those other lots along Willamette are R3, and then along 24th is a combination, it looks like, of R2 and R3?
Right.
Okay.
So even under existing zoning, there would be some impact in terms of what's potentially developable there, even without a policy change?
And I guess that's what I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm going to give kind of a sense of where I'm leaning on this too, is that we have this entire area designated with a five-story limit. And we have currently GO to the north. We have a fair amount of R3 and R2 surrounding these. And, you know, with the current metro plan designation also being medium-density residential, I think I struggle a little bit. And I understand, I understand the neighbors' concerns as far as the housing and living there and the dead-end street. But I have some real concerns about changing that in a way that would kind of create a dip in the, in the whole area, it seems like. I, I don't know, and I guess I'm unfortunately, maybe not unfortunate, I'm really struggling, but I am leaning toward staying with our original recommendation. And I know that's not going to make people happy, but that's kind of my leaning at this point. So Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Taylor.
Question, staff. Apparently to the north of this property, it's zoned GO, general office. What is, is there a height limitation in that zoning?
There is. Is it 50? It's 50 feet.
Same as R3.
Yeah.
Wanted to get it in the record.
Yeah.
And that's okay. And under the current proposed plan designation, it goes to commercial with a zoning of mixed-use. And are there limitations on heights in the proposed designation or the proposed zone?
Well, for that property to the north, the height limit would be five-story. The area currently zoned GO that would go to a mixed-use district, and if you, on the screen there, you'll see the five designation, which covers that sort of whole quadrant extending to 24th.
Thanks. At this point, taking a little more community look at this, we've gone through a lengthy Envision Eugene process that talks about trying to get more density into our core commercial areas or our core transition, or transportation corridors. And I go back to some of the numbers that we've projected through that Envision Eugene process that says if we use current population, we have an unfound amount of land for approximately 1,600 multifamily dwelling-type units. And I don't mean apartments, I mean something other than detached housing. If we go with the new population numbers that I don't think the council has decided on yet, it gets to a point where that number could swell to as much as 2,400 to 2,500. And so from looking at the policies that have been, to this point, reasonably adopted by our city council, they're suggesting to us that we need to find places where Eugene can go up and not out further. And after being involved in trying to find the areas where we would expand, it becomes incredibly costly. If we stay within our core areas, we find that the return to tax dollars, property tax dollars is increased, infrastructure cost of expansion is greatly reduced if even, if there's even much cost there versus expanding. And yet on the other side, I understand the neighbors' concern about, I don't want this to affect my property, I've lived there and so on. So I always have that dilemma. Do we go with sort of where we talk about wanting to be as far as a city? Or do we continually just not accept the higher density and at some point have to recognize that we have to expand urban growth boundary and continue to spread out versus going up? I personally am affected by the higher density because it's a project literally over my back fence. It's going to build a 200 and some unit retirement center. And I was one of the people that got my neighbors to agree that that was a good thing to happen because we need more density. The five stories to me is likely not achievable in the area from a financial standpoint. I wish there was a way that we could say, hey, we're going to limit it to maybe three stories for X number of years until some of the transition starts to take place, if it actually does. But on the other side of it, I've got to believe that we have to sort of, at some point as a community, bite the bullet. And I guess I'm turned off. So quickly concluding, I'm sort of leaning towards the way we planned it to start with.
The what?
Option one, basically. And I'm not totally convinced I'm there yet.
Commissioner Taylor?
Rather than repeat a lot of what Commissioner Duncan said, I'm in agreement. And I am very compassionate towards the existing owners. So I lean towards remaining with the recommendation. And I'm open to discussions for something similar, more similar to option two. Not a proponent of, for a lot of the same reasons that Commissioner Duncan outlined, actually option three.
Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Jaworski, if we can get your sense of where you're leaning at this point. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to at least make the point that this section of, you know, we talk about our arterials where we're going to build the density. But this is not really, this little piece of Willamette is not really, doesn't really fall into the category of our other arterials, which are two or three, four stor-, you know, three stor-, you know, three lanes of traffic. In other words, this, this has always been a problem to me. This is why we have a special area zone for this area, because it doesn't quite fit the idea of West 11th, West 13th. The access is very restricted there. You know, the road curves, you know, when you get down into downtown, it's more like a normal street. But, you know, in this section here, it's, and, you know, and we've got a commercial area to the south. So I just want to make that point. I, I think it's important that we, you know, plan for the future, but also weigh the, you know, when citizens make all that effort to make comments, some of them written handwritten because probably they're older and they don't have access to computers or printers or whatever, maybe throw away their typewriters. I just think we should, you know, take it in, you know, take it in. So I would be more in favor of the, and I also am very concerned about the traffic implications of that one block street. I just don't think that that, and again, we're not talking about the corridor. We're off the corridor now a couple of lots based upon the current zoning, you know, at least 150 feet or something like that. So the corridor itself can develop as densely as we want it to. And the GO property, we're allowing it to go higher. I question whether that makes, you know, makes sense, agreeing with Commissioner Duncan. But this area here, once you get off into this residential area off Willamette, I'm, I would be more in favor of one of the option three.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Well, I agree as far as traffic goes in the intersection with Commissioner Baker, that it's really not an arterial. You know, when I drive that, it's pretty narrow. But I think that what we're doing in this red enclosed area isn't going to make or break that because there's five all around it and three on the west side. So it's going to be what it's going to be. And it's going to be the issue that's going to arise. And what little we do in the middle, I don't think is going to really affect that intersection that significantly. However, when I, and as I asked earlier, the fact that there is an opportunity to increase building height based on things, my leaning is toward option two initially. I'll just be quick with that.
Okay. So Commissioner Taylor, and then Commissioner Duncan. Then I think we probably should move on to the next one.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I just want a clarification. On 23rd Avenue, the alley both parallel and then the alley connecting 23rd and 24th, are those, I know that the alley obviously going towards Amazon's not connected, but 23rd to 24th is, does that actually connect? Is it open?
I'm not certain.
From the aerial photo, it looks like it does.
I think so, but I can't say for sure.
I think Commissioner Duncan?
And I meant to this before my last remarks, since I was not at the public record, or public hearing, I did view the webcast to watch it. So I did hear everybody speak.
Thank you for clarifying that. Well, Gabe, I think that maybe gives you some options. It looks like the general leaning is toward the original with some concerns about heights and possibly option, I know there's a couple of commissioners with option two and Commissioner Baker with option three, so.
Sure, sure. We'll take that under advisement and hopefully be able to bring it back for a more formal vote at our next meeting.
All right. Let's move on to Portland Street, Cascade Manor.
Okay. So we also heard a significant amount of testimony from property owners in the sort of southern Portland Street area near Cascade Manor. We also heard from Cascade Manor's representative as well. And sort of, in essence, it's some of the same or similar concerns that we heard about the change to an impact on single-family character. There are some existing single-family homes still in the area that we heard the most, I think, significant testimony from a desire to essentially retain or preserve that existing character for those single-family homes that still exist in the area. Yep, we heard about concern for traffic, parking. And some of the testimony actually, I think, relates to the ongoing redevelopment activity for Cascade Manor itself. And so it presents sort of an interesting dilemma as we look at the long-term view and folks experiencing the near-term or immediate impacts. But again, similar to East 23rd, some of the same key factors, I think, come into play. The fact that this area is, for the most part, designated already for medium-density residential. And here we have abutting R2 and R3 properties on either side of the existing single-family. If you look at the existing zoning map in your packet, you'll see that there's a handful of properties directly along Portland Avenue, or Portland Street and 30th Avenue, still zoned R1. But again, it's designated MDR. And even with the recent history, we've seen Cascade Manor actually come through and upzone their property in the area to help accommodate their redevelopment project currently. So some of the same issues or questions arise with East 23rd in terms of a policy shift. If we were to look at a lower plan designation and zoning, as it's proposed currently, it would, it would get the AC sub-district. And you can see on the height diagram that it's actually a little bit more complex in terms of the proposed heights. There's a seven-story height standard for that sort of core area to the, to the east of Cascade Manor. And a three-story transition along the south. We did also hear from Cascade Manor a desire to potentially even increase that to five-story. And that's included in some of the options we've put before you. But in essence, one of the options would be to retain the proposal as it is, including the height limits. Another would be to keep the AC sub-district but lower the height limits. There's a variety of options there we can talk about here in a minute. And again, the third option would potentially be to lower the designation and zone to SFO or SFORA. If we were to go that direction, I think staff need to look a little bit more closely at the existing development patterns. And we'd probably be looking at some select properties along Portland and 30th there. So I think rather than just looking at the zoning sub-districts in isolation or those options, we really probably should talk about some of the height limit options. Because this is more complex, it's not as simple as a five-story, three-story question. And really, I think one of the key questions would be, or one of the options we present, is to look at possibly lowering the seven-story height limit to five. Another option would be to look at key properties along Portland Street, lowering that to five stories with step downs, and potentially look at 30th Avenue as a transition to SFO. So we're getting a little more intricate in terms of what changes we might recommend. That's something we can bring back at our next meeting. If there's a preference, we can look at some more detailed maps and options with what that might look like. So I think with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. We have Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Taylor.
Two questions to start with. On that diagram, maybe I missed it, but to be clear, you actually are showing the three-story red box to go south of 30th. Are we talking about X number of lots?
I think that the box there is, and jump in here, Jen, if I don't have this right, but really is to help show the area of concern in terms of the testimony we heard. So that's coming from some single-family owners to the south of this area along 30th. And so that's really, I mean, the box isn't intended to suggest we'd be raising the height limit or changing the zoning for those existing single-family areas to the south.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't talking about
We're not.
Pushing south for transition, just for clarity.
Correct.
And then you use the term, it's in some of the information, you refer to keep some key properties. And that suggests to me that it's not all the properties, that there's choices? I just want clarity when that term's used on what we're kind of referencing.
Sure. And I think, and again, Jen, if I don't have this right, jump in. But there are, if you look at the existing zoning map, there are properties that are currently zoned R1. And I think when we say key properties, we're really looking at those existing R1 properties that have single-family dwellings currently.
South of 30th?
Nope.
They're on Portland.
Along Portland, south of West 29th Place and extending to 30th.
I was just trying to get a clarity on when you refer to key properties, that I understand which properties we're referencing.
So the intent was really to focus on, I think, on the R1, the existing R1 properties. But again, it's really presented as an option. When we say key properties, the, you know, it's at the commission's discretion to look at where we might really hone in on those lower plan designations or transitions.
Also unlike East 23rd, just to get kind of a general direction and then study up more closely.
Okay. Thank you.
It must have been Gabe, I don't know.
I want to step out and just discuss, discuss three or four areas that were generally topics that cover all of these areas. And I know we'll discuss some of them in a different, later. But it's consistent that obviously traffic and parking, we'll discuss this later, buffering, compatibility, and transition. So, yeah, buffering, transition, and compatibility. So what I'd love some context, because we have the current zoning and the proposed, excuse me, the current and proposed zoning and metro plan, but what, I just want clarity from staff, the surrounding neighborhood that really is in these areas that are, we're talking about today, Sohi, Lincoln Alley, as we get farther west, Portland, are they all LDR in the metro plan?
Yes.
Okay. And, so with the three-story height limitation that's buffering throughout this study area, LDR, is there a step down or a way you address the new zone stepping down to the R1 to provide a transition?
Only as indicated on the height map.
Okay.
Although there are transitions that are required, depending on how the property's situated in comparison to an R1 or an SFO property. But, if you're talking about step downs, that's indicated on the height map.
Right. And those are primarily for streets, not for adjacency to LDR, am I correct?
It's both.
Okay. So, if we can talk about that when we're talking about this Portland Street area, I would appreciate it. The other is, another mentioned, quite a few, there were three at least testimonies, pieces of testimony that addressed the fact that actually what's being proposed actually won't fit on a site. So, I wanted some additional context. One was an example of rowhouse, for instance, that they had to occur every linear feet, and it's a 54-foot width, and there's a minimum of three, for instance. It's not only that, but they're streets. So, I want to just get a general concept as we talk about these areas. Did staff actually look to, look at the fact that what's being proposed is realistic?
And just, right. And we can come back with more detail, but I'd like to know, in particular, from commissioners, if there's aspects of the proposed transitions within the code that we might, that the commission might feel is deficient. But, we did really look closely at both step downs as indicated on the height diagram, as well as the height limits and adjacent uses to really carefully consider those impacts between abutting uses and to look at those edge areas. And so, in a lot of ways, I think that our proposed standards are fairly sophisticated in looking at transitions, whether it's additional setbacks or landscaping between uses, between sub-districts, as well as the height diagram itself, where, for example, here, we've proposed a three-story transition between the higher-intensity uses and the single-family. I think that pattern is pretty consistent throughout the different sub-areas where we've looked at the edges. And so, there's a combination of things. The step downs indicated on the height diagram, the height districts themselves, in terms of the number of stories, but then the code also has transition standards embedded within the proposed sub-districts where those uses abut. And so, maybe for purposes of future discussion, if there are key concerns, particular areas where we think those are deficient, that's where we'd like to understand and maybe be able to help the commission get more specific.
So, I'll, the reason why I'm bringing up right now is Portland Street in particular, there's a lot going on in this little area. And we received, similar to 23rd, we received a lot of testimony.
Right.
So, I want a better understanding of what that transition looks like for these neighbors that aren't across the street, that might abut the property lines. So, if you guys could give an example of what that might look like imposing the code standards that are relevant.
So, the transition standards that Gabe mentioned, we have the interior yard slope setback, which is, applies whenever you've got either the mixed-use zone and the apartment, apartment condominium zone, abutting either an SFO zone or an R1 zone. So, and it's when they're, the property line, the two properties are actually touching as opposed to across an alley or across a street. And so, if this zone goes entirely to apartment condominium, then there would be no internal, none of those transitions would be required between adjacent properties regardless of the use that's actually on the property.
And to clarify, there are diagrams, I don't have it at my fingertips, but in the draft code, there is actually a codified diagram helping to illustrate the appearance of a transition and the slope setback where it's adjacent to SFO and R1. So, maybe that helps visually.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah. Just to follow up on Commissioner Taylor, too, some of the testimony also raised issues about, that our street designations are right-ofways. We didn't actually analyze, just to give you a good example, and there was a statement in there that one-third of our right-ofway areas had issues, had similar errors. I'm concerned about that, I want to mention that. But, specifically here, there's some right-ofway issues. It's a narrow right-ofway, I think it's 40 feet or whatever, 40 and 47. Let me just cover all these, and I'll let you. Second concern I had was Cascade Manor, it's partial housing, but it's partial nursing home and more intensive care. And I look at the zone designation and I see there's some commercial here, and then there's some, you know, the existing zone designation, it's commercial and multifamily We just outright allow nursing homes in residential districts, and the main reason I'm asking is, I would like to better understand what the parking implications are, because obviously you have employees 24 hours a day and, in other words. I'd want to know that if we're allowing this outright, that our parking requirements for the residential part are, you know, are equal or better than the apartments that we would need, or if this were, you know, a similar facility that we didn't count as And finally, I wanted to mention a concern that was raised in testimony for this area, I believe, in particular. We don't have continuous sidewalks in a lot of these areas that we're redeveloping, and we talk about doing a pedestrian-friendly area, but yet we don't have sidewalks. And we're proposing major development, and sometimes it's, you know, as an example, in this case, the development may take a couple of years. You know, the sidewalk on one side of the street is completely blocked, but there's not a complete sidewalk on the other side of the street that you could use. So, you know, what is our policy, or do we have policies that we are putting in place with this that would guarantee that we have some complete sidewalks when we do this redevelopment? And that would extend to, in cases where we're, I'll use it as an example, you know, where we have gravel alleys and we're intensifying the development that requiring the alleys to be paved. I don't know that I've seen anything in the code. And finally, I'll add that, one of my concerns raised at the main meeting was that slope setbacks, and some of these issues were still on the table with design review. I think that some of these measures should be, not be allowed to be adjusted in design review. If we're using that as a transition, then it shouldn't be something that you could replace.
So, I can provide at least an initial response to some of Commissioner Baker's concerns. So, in terms of the sidewalks and the existing condition where, for parts of the neighborhood, they're disconnected or don't exist, I think that it's important to recognize that the policy choice in front of the commission as part of this package is really about street typologies that would reflect a future outcome. And so, as is the case throughout town, there are portions of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks built yet. This package, in essence, would set policy for, I think, a more generous and pedestrian-friendly design in the event of incremental future development. But, there's nothing specific in this adoption package that would set a hard and fast policy about particular sidewalk sections or anything more aggressive than what we would normally expect in terms of an incremental development pattern over time. That said, around Portland Street and 30th Avenue in particular, where the existing right-ofway is particularly narrow, the existing streets are particularly narrow, I think it's also important to recognize the difference between existing conditions and reflecting upon what it is that we're proposing for a 20, 30-plus-year outcome in terms of that future design. And so, one of the options, to talk a little bit about street typology, one of the options that we put forward was actually to look a little more closely at Portland Street and West 30th Avenue, to see which typology, or if we were to revise that, what might be better than currently proposed. We also heard from Cascade Manor about potentially changing the typology for West 29th Place from, I believe it was, from I to G, to have a relatively, well, slightly less width on the side box. And frankly, I think looking at the practical difficulties of expanding that width in that particular area, that street stub, were amenable to that. It's not a huge difference. I mean, I think the two-foot width difference is really the key there. That's just one component of the options we put forth. And back to Commissioner Baker's comments about nursing homes, I think we recognize in the proposed use list that Cascade Manor is an existing use that has some component of higher level of care, but that, in effect, we've accommodated that use as a retirement center apartments in, as an allowance that's permitted outright in the AC sub-district. But, if you look at the existing code, you'll, I think, recognize that nursing homes are treated differently as a, actually a conditional use in some residential zones. And the intent here was not to enable future expansion of, or creation of new nursing homes as part of that retirement center apartment category, and that really nursing homes are actually an allowed use in the mixed-use or commercial sub-districts, not AC. So, in terms of their future expansion, I think that could have some impact. But, anyway, we heard specific testimony concerned about retirement center apartments, so I wanted to touch upon that as well.
Regarding the design review aspect of transitions, transitions are included in design review because the understanding is that the specific rules that we, that we apply in the clear and objective standards of the code may not actually be the best transition possible between two properties. So, the intent, and it's specifically included in the transition, or in the building scale and form portion of design review, is to require that, that under design review, the principles by which the designer would be judged and any change granted would be that you cite structures such that the light, air, and privacy of adjacent properties in SFO and R1 zones is preserved. So, our intention in writing that is to create a more comprehensive standard that would be used in design review, rather than something that is limited by the nature of being clear and objective, such as the slope setback transition standard. This...
What section are you referring to?
I'm sorry. I'm referring to 9.3894, Section 5, Subsection A. Going back to the beginning of the design review approval criteria in 9.3892, just to remind you, the first general criteria of design review is that the project achieve an equivalent or higher quality of overall design than would be required through the strict adherence to the standards. And then, the second criteria is that the design appropriately transitions to any adjacent properties in SFO and R1 zones through design techniques and treatments, including but not limited to additional setbacks, open space, enhanced pedestrian space, building orientation, amassing, and continues on. So, the transition has been a very essential part of our consideration of these issues throughout this, and there's, we intend that design review would be actually a more neighbor-friendly version of transition than you could actually achieve through the clear and objective standards.
Just from my point of view, from past experience, those criteria are so vague that they really don't allow you to, you know, they don't give you anything. I mean, we have this with ARAs all the time. That's just way too vague in terms of giving you any guarantee that what you end up getting is equivalent to what the slope setback might have guaranteed. So, they sound nice, but there's no, I mean, what kind of quantitative measure do we have? I mean, you know, there's nothing there, from my point of view, past experience. And others might disagree with me, but I see a few other head nods as well.
My head nod wasn't in agreement.
No, I think, Commissioner Mills might agree.
As an architect, I appreciate the ability to have some of that flexibility, and I don't just always assume that we're going to screw it up. So, I do have myself in the queue. Question on the three-story area there to the south as kind of that transition, I think. Was the intent of that to kind of transition that area down to the single-family across 30th?
Yes.
And the current height limit in R1, which I'm assuming across 30th is R1, is 35 feet, I think?
It's 30 feet, and then 37 feet if you have a six over 12 slope.
And the height limit proposed for the three-story is the 45 feet?
Okay.
And I, okay, so, to me, that seems to make a pretty good transition coming up. My concern with the request for doing some step downs in that more internally is that I'm not sure that's really going to achieve the protection to the house that's next door to the development that's going in regardless. I think if there aren't any kind of transitions between adjacent properties, if the whole thing's seven-story or three-story, then, you know, you really, you really don't get that protection if you've got that one lone house that's in the middle of everything. And I see a lot of the similar issues here as we saw up on 23rd. And, you know, I think, I just lean towards leaving it as we originally proposed, so I'll just get that out on the table.
Did you skip me, or am I...
No, you're next. So, Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Mills.
Well, I can be fairly quick, because I only had two questions, and they've both been discussed quite thoroughly here. My first one was on transitions, which has been a lot discussed. My only issue would be for clarity, and I didn't notice it said, because there's a lot of flexibility, is that where there are the transitions or the three-stories that are adjacent to R1s, I personally believe there should be no flexibility to ever increase that height. And I don't know if that's permitted or not, but I'm just saying if there's low-density next to a three-story height, whether it's considered a transition or not, like way down here on 23rd, that there should still be no way for that to be increased next to an R1. That's the only comment I had there. The other comment was, is, and it's the same that I didn't support when they did E-Web, is that on I to G, reducing on West 29th the pavement, I mean, that makes no sense to me. I would not support reducing the sidewalks, even though it was requested. I mean, I'm looking at eight-story, five, seven, seven, I mean, there's a lot of density there, and they're coming down, and we're supposed to make this walkable. I think every couple of feet you get from a five, seven-story building is nice, because I have those where I live, and the wider the sidewalk, the better it is, rather than bumping your arm up against a huge building. That's all I have to say there.
Commissioner Mills?
I guess I'm going to repeat myself about how the densities are moving in the zoning versus the plan. Original plan designation was MDR. Within that, there were several houses that, or properties that are R1 and predate the MDR. Now, we're taking those all from MDR to HDR. And I understand why we're doing it, but it seems like we're just, you know, washing our hands of, or not recognizing any property rights for somebody that's owned property or bought an R1 property. So, in that regard, I can't support the existing plan. I also want to make sure I understand that, as proposed, there's no boundary protection on this for anybody that's, you know, on the south side of 30th, you've got the street and there's the step down, but if you've got any internal adjacent properties and they've all been upzoned, there's no boundary protection for any existing properties there. Those folks are going to be there until they get tired of living in the shadows, and then they're going to sell. That's what I understand it to be. If I'm incorrect, I'd love to be corrected. If I'm incorrect, I'd love to be corrected.
Okay. Do we want to give staff a sense of what we're leaning? I know I gave mine, I think Commissioner Mills gave his. Duncan, Commissioner Duncan?
Okay, Randall. To me, the boundary on 30th is different than 23rd, because 23rd was, is intended to be part of the South Willamette Plan, and the buffering to the east is Amazon Parkway, and then school, and park. To me, we're, that we have to pay attention to the transition across 30th, because it is single-family, there's no intent to change that, so I don't know that I'm sold on what that transition needs to be. I'm, I'm okay, I think Commissioner Jaworski suggested that if it's going to be R3 at 45 feet, that there is not an adjustment for that edge-type property. I think what I'd like to see, actually, if it's going to be three stories, that either there is additional setback, more than whatever that, I think it's probably only 15 feet now, is that right, Gabe? On the north side of 30th?
10 feet.
10 feet? If it's going to be three-story, I'd like to see it a little further back. I believe that, after looking at this area, that the type of building we're talking about, it's going to require assemblage of lots to get this type of development to occur. They're not going to occur on these small little tax lots. You're not, certainly not going to build five or seven stories on something that's 60 feet wide. So, it seems to me that as developments occur, that it would be appropriate for the south side of 30th to have strong setback and transition-type requirements. And I'm going to leave it to the geniuses to figure out what, what that might be.
North side of 30th?
Excuse me, north side. No, yes, north side, excuse me.
Certainly, we can, we can look at some of those options and bring back more detail as to what that might look like, if we were to add a special step down, you know, looking at the allowance for height bonuses, and whether we should restrict that more than is currently proposed, so we'll, we'll bring that back.
Okay. And as far as within the core of this area, five along Willamette, 7th in the middle, and then, of course, 8th pretty much exists, again, if we're looking for some density, I don't want us to see us sort of use an approach that if this lot, if somebody wants to build three or four or five stories on one lot, that the one next door has an effect on it if it's within those areas.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I like going right after Commissioner Duncan. My, just, or my input short. So, around 23rd, I did want, it is, there is a difference for me, and it's similar to what Commissioner Duncan described, and that is, the current metro plan has that entire area, West 23rd, as MDR, that's around East 23rd. So, and you've got Willamette and Amazon on the other side. So, it's a little different context than looking at Portland specifically where it's bordering on the low-density residential in the metro plan. So, that's really, I want to reiterate what Commissioner Duncan is talking about, and that is, to look closely at buffering the adjacency of those properties to the LDR on the south. And, like I said, I love your suggestions, and I like the, maybe there's a limit to 45 feet, but I look forward to hearing what you're going to bring back.
So, I think you gave, Mr. Mills gave your thoughts. Commissioner Baker, which direction are you leaning?
Well, I'm concerned about transitions, too, and the more I look at this, I'm a little concerned where we, where we're going from, well, we talk about the transition across 30th Avenue, but when I look at the current zoning, we're going from essentially low-density to high-density. That seems to be a rather aggressive change, particularly when it's facing an R1 area, and we keep talking about the height as if it's 30 feet, but, you know, most of Eugene is built out of single fam, you know, a single-story building. So, again, although the code allows you to build 30 feet, we assume that's the peak. Places aren't steep or roofs, so that's what you get. So, the sidewalls are going to be a lot lower, but, but, you know, we're talking about, over here now, we're talking about large heights here, 45 or 7, 90 feet. Again, I'm a little concerned about upzoning that much between essentially low-density LDR to HDR for this, some of that area there along 29th. And also, in the current zoning, you can see it's sort of a mix of R1 and R2, which makes sense. Now, we're going to essentially R4, or, you know, we've got a new zone for it, but I would be concerned about transitions, particularly 30th, and also upzoning that property to, all to be HDR, rather than having some of it go from, you know, its current designation LDR to one of the MDRs instead, however that is done, which could be by height limits or whatever.
Is there one of the options that you lean more toward, or just mostly concerned about those transitions?
For some of the area, I would actually look at option 3, and for some of the area, I would look at option 2. I mean, I think it's option 3 and 2 along 30th Avenue, depending on what you decide about how much upzoning you do. So, you might upzone the west part on West, on West 30th to HDR, but the east half of that block you would leave, leave as MDR in.
Okay.
So, there's a gradual transition for occupants that live there now, you know, most likely in single-story houses.
Good time. Commissioner Jaworski?
Well, with the understanding of what was said on sidewalks, transitions, buffering, and those types of things, I happen to live where there's some tall buildings in R1, and some R1 or two stories already, so, and I don't know how far this eight, I don't know the width of some of those areas. I assume they must be a couple hundred feet before the streets even, if you have those three-story areas before you get to the eight-story building. So, I guess I could, I could live with option 1, with those other things into consideration.
Commissioner Randall, I realize I wasn't super clear, so I'll be really clear. It's because I was taking advantage of your, your input. It's option 1. I prefer option 1. I can be open to option 2 with some continued discussions, or after continued discussions about transitions, height, either option 1 or option 2.
What I was hearing, Commissioner Taylor, from you and Commissioner Duncan, was, I was hearing option 1 with some limits on not being able to adjust that height-
Yeah.
-on the three, three-story, and I, I'm hoping that came through.
Yeah.
And I, I think I would agree with that. I think, you know, as that step down, because it is single-family across the street and intended to stay that way.
So, to sort of encapsulate what I've heard, at least to the best of my ability on the fly here, what we'd like to bring back is, is kind of a hybrid of option 1 and 2, in that we would keep the AC sub-district, but look at, in particular, the area along 30th for additional transitions, or limits on height bonuses, setbacks, you know, and to look at that edge more closely with a more defined proposal. Another option, I think that, out of fairness, what we would present is to look at potentially downzoning that edge to something like SFORA as a more aggressive alternative.
Which edge are you thinking of?
Along 30th, you know, in other words, looking at that transition-
It doesn't need it as three-story.
Correct.
Isn't that option 3, then?
It's partially option 3. I mean, we're not, we're, it's, it's a limited area that would, I think, shift to SFORA along, along 30th.
That's what 3 says.
That does that.
Oh.
You're funny.
It doesn't, it doesn't-
I already thought it through.
I think you were thinking that, which is what I'm wanting, is that the, the SFO needs to go up Portland Street a little bit, but 3, in fact, only keeps it along 30th.
Okay.
So, I don't think it goes quite far enough.
Okay.
But of the options that are here, I'm most comfortable with 3, so.
That's okay. I just had you down as not supporting, so I, it's good to have a-
Yeah, that clarification helped.
I understand that.
But that's, that's how it works, so, okay. So, does that help, Gabe?
It does, thanks.
Let's move to Mill High and Perry Street.
Okay, I'm going to talk about that one.
Do you want to talk about the street typology for the section 2?
I think we're going to come back with street typologies-
Part 10.
-for the end, is that what I was hearing?
Well, we can certainly, so, for purposes of today's discussion, where there were key comments brought up about street typology, we've blended it in with these larger topic areas. So, it, what I heard was, was at least, I think, majority of Commissioner's interest in keeping the street typology on West 29th Place the way that it is, to sort of handle that additional density. I didn't hear any clear direction on whether or not there's a preference to change the typology for 30th and Portland. That is something that we'd need to look at more closely in terms of what's existing and, and which of the typologies in our proposed code would work for that, but I didn't hear any significant concerns raised by commissioners about that.
You know, when I was looking between I and G, I had to look pretty close to see what the difference even was.
Sidewalk width.
To me, that seemed pretty minor, but I know there were some concerns, I think, some of the commissioners of not having too narrow the sidewalks, so.
Right. Out of fairness to the folks that did testify about traffic concerns, and parking, and access along Portland, I think, at least in part, related to Cascade Manor's construction activity, we felt that we'd at least float that as a possible topic for the commission to give direction on if we were to, to change those typologies. We're open to that. We would have to look at it more closely and get a sense of your preference, so.
I think I saw Commissioner Duncan, and Commissioner Taylor?
Don't I remember somewhere-
Yes, Brian, oh.
No, go ahead. No, but there, don't I remember that Cascade owns most of the parcels on both sides of 29th Place?
I believe that to be true.
Well, all they have to do is ask to vacate the street, and then they can do what they want, correct?
Well, that, that would require council approval, so it would be an extensive process, like, no guarantees in terms of the outcome. I haven't heard Cascade Manor express any intent to do that. Their testimony is really about the two-foot difference in the sidewalk width.
Okay.
So.
Commissioner Taylor?
If, if that's indeed the case, if they own the property, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, I would be a proponent of that change.
Okay.
If it's, unless it affects other adjacent owners. But if they're, if it's all Cascade Manor, I would support that. I did want to bring out-
It's, it's not all Cascade Manor.
Can you, do you know?
I can clarify what properties are.
Yeah, that's great. Do you want to do that now, or wait?
I'll have to wait.
Okay, let's do it.
I know that they own the north side.
Okay. So, yeah, if you could clarify, that would be great. So, you know, I just want to bring up Brian Wanty's testimony, and he, he's one of the people that I had referenced early on more generically. And what I'm curious to find out, Steph, when you did the, some of the research, when you have a typology, street typology, and you've got a width that actually doesn't accommodate that typology, what are your thoughts around that? I mean, what's that going to look and feel like, and what is-
Yeah, yeah. It's, I think it's, it's, it's one of those things that's difficult to explain, I think, to folks that are experiencing an adoption process like this, and, and looking at the policy changes, looking forward 20-plus years. But it's a reality that we, as planning staff, and city staff, and public works face on a daily basis when we're looking at redevelopment of individual properties, and on a frontage-by-frontage basis, looking at whether or not additional right-ofways needed, or special setbacks to accommodate that future intended width. There's really nothing out of the ordinary here in terms of us proposing street typologies that reflect that future condition. They're, they're certainly more design-oriented, or have some details that are heavy on pedestrian friendliness, and, and sort of that safety, and the additional planter widths, and things like that. But it's, it's, it's not new that we deal with these questions on a daily basis with either building permits, or other more significant redevelopment projects, where the city may need to exact additional right-ofway, or to establish a special setback to preserve that width. It may not happen right away. Usually, it doesn't occur on an incremental frontage-by-frontage basis, but really what we're doing is preserving the space for that future condition. And so, it can be messy, in the sense that there may be disconnected sidewalks, or not an existing width, right-ofway width, that's sufficient to really immediately realize that design intent. But really, this is forward-thinking about a 20-year plan and a future street typology that is very different than what exists there now. We recognize that there are certain streets that are substantially narrower than either the existing planned right-ofway width, or what we're proposing now. And so, that's, that's one of those things that we have to work through incrementally as we implement this.
I have a follow-up.
Okay, we're going to need to keep moving, go ahead.
Yeah, I have concerns about that. I mean, I think it makes sense when we're talking about Willamette and some of the certain major areas where we expect that we might eventually end up requiring special setbacks, or having to purchase right-ofway, but I think in these residential areas, that really doesn't make a lot of sense. We're not going to be buying right-ofway on Portland Street between 29th and 30th anytime soon. I'm not talking about 20 years, I'm talking about 50 years. So, you should really plan accordingly. Now, we might have expectations that we'd like to do this, so we could have a current street designation and a preferred one that we'd like to go to in the future, but it just seems like we should make sure that we have street typologies that will actually fit with what we have, and will have on the ground for the next 20 to 50 years. I mean, we're not going to be buying up right-ofway on small residential streets, that's just not in the cards, not when you're trying to, you know, do right-ofway expansions on major arterials where you definitely need more space. So, I just don't think that that makes sense. Maybe you can tell me why it does, but I just don't get it.
Well, again, just to reiterate, I think that the existing code works much like the proposed code would, in that our street classifications and existing right-ofway widths don't necessarily match what the future condition is, is planned for. And that occurs incrementally through a combination of either special setbacks, or rights-of-way exaction, if, depending on the, you know, intensity of a development project, there are opportunities where the city will actually require them to dedicate it. And so, it's nothing new in the sense that this is very much an incremental process for development of our public street system to, to our future and planned widths. What's different here, though, and to clarify one point, is that we are treating Willamette Street and West 29th Avenue in a more sophisticated and detailed way by enabling kind of a series of options for owners as they redevelop, whether to expand and implement the right-ofway improvements immediately, so that we see that incremental change as projects occur, or, or whether just to preserve the special setback. I mean, I think the fundamental piece is, whether existing or proposed, is that those special setbacks are an essential tool that the cities use for many years to preserve the future right-ofway width, in the event that we- the future right-ofway width in the event that we do acquire, but this adoption package doesn't change our policy approach to the sort of incremental nature of, of how we develop our street system.
Mil High and Ferry.
Mil High and Ferry. So this is a little bit different. There's a couple of different issues that we're going to look at. The residents and letters that we've gotten in response are generally supportive of the plan in general, specifically the commercial and increased pedestrian access along Willamette. Most of the letters that we got are concentrated on High Street, so a couple of the things that we're going to look at is, the first thing we'll look at are considerations as far as the right-of-way and street typologies, and then the second thing that we'll consider is some of the rezoning that's proposed. So High Street is the narrowest, has, does have the narrowest right-of-way between Pearl Street, High Street, Mill Street, and Ferry Street. It's a 40-foot right-of-way, and it also has the most cut-through traffic and high-speed traffic where people are trying to bypass Amazon Parkway and get down to 29th, and from what I understand from the neighbors, there has been a continued effort to try to get some traffic calming in the area, and it was last studied in 2008, at which time it didn't really qualify for any traffic calming. So now there's been an increased concern specifically with the, because of the restriping on Willamette Street, that this might, you know, kind of exacerbate some of the issues, and I, I want to be clear that if we recommend some kind of, an adoption of what we've recommended, that any kind of traffic calming would not be codified, but we can maybe facilitate as part of the package, and I think that some precedents that can be taken into consideration are some of the numbered streets to the south. 32nd is also a 40-foot right-of-way and it has speed bumps. 31st is a 60-foot right-of-way and it has speed bumps, and then 33rd is a little bit different because it's classified as a neighborhood collector and it has speed bumps and traffic bulb bouts. So the options as far as that, and the other thing that's come up as part of that is that the street typology that's designated in the proposal is for parking on one side of the street. Currently, there's parking on both sides of the street, which the neighbors feel at least lowers the speed. It might not help with the cut-through, but it does lower the speed on the street, so they'd like to continue with the two-sided parking. We'd have to look into that a bit because that would be type I, which we've proposed for Pearl Street, Mill Street, and Ferry Street, but that would have a minimum right-of-way of 54 feet, which High Street doesn't currently. Do you want to talk about that issue before we talk about rezoning?
Sure, I think, so we have another set of options that talk a little bit more about the zoning subdistricts and whatnot, but, but I think one of the key issues we heard in testimony was about the street typology for High Street. One of the options, I think Jen touched upon, would be to pursue traffic calming measures, and we'd have to study that further to see if, you know, if they qualify at this point or if, over time, they may see enough impact as things change to, to, to trigger some of that, but really, the question is about the typology and whether or not the Commission would prefer a typology that would, one, expand the width and, two, allow, allow for parking on both sides as opposed to what's currently in the recommendation.
Commissioner Duncan, Taylor? Duncan first.
First question, on trying to expand the right-ofway, is it, would it be a process of going through and actually purposely acquiring that right-ofway or only through redevelopment?
Only through redevelopment.
So the process there might take decades and decades before you ever achieve anything of substance?
Yes.
So that, to me, doesn't even seem to be an option. As far as parking on both sides of the street, I have some friends who lost parking on one side of their street, and people park on that side of the street anyways because there's not enough parking on one side for residential areas, and so they end up parking there and fighting Johnny Law a lot, or they move their cars and watch, or all kinds of things go on there, so I don't like the idea of taking residential streets and putting one-way parking or one-side parking. Is the option of controlling access into High off of Amazon Parkway an alternative? I mean, like we've done out here in, in the Jefferson West Side, there's places where, if you're going a certain direction, you actually can't enter a street, but it doesn't change it to a one-way street?
Well, I think that'd be something we would need to study in terms of traffic calming measures or what maybe, in addition to speed bumps, might, might be a solution there, and we'd, we'd have to coordinate with our public work staff to really look at those options, what makes the most sense in terms of flow, and, you know, one of the, one of the key concerns we have looking at this in the long-term view is the street connectivity and traffic dispersal and convenience and out-of-direction travel, but if indeed it becomes a, you know, thoroughfare for cut-through traffic as time goes on, it, it may warrant some traffic calming measures. I'm not in a position to say what exactly those would be, but I, I do think it's important for folks, in particular, given the testimony along High Street, to recognize that this is an extremely long-term view and that, to your point, Commissioner Duncan, that the, the likelihood of dramatic change in any short-term is, is really low, even though the typology reflects parking on one side, we would expect that the existing conditions there will persist as they are for quite some time until we see, you know, sort of cottage cluster or SFO land divisions that would eventually increase density along there, so.
And what does it take for neighborhoods to have traffic studies done for calming? I see Chris back there.
Yeah, I'll bring Chris up for that, thanks.
I didn't want Chris not to feel like he's being walked out today.
Chris Henry, Public Works, Transportation Planning Engineer. I manage the traffic calming program. In order to qualify for traffic calming, there needs to be a petition from the neighbors on the street, signed by at least half of the residents taking, or property owners for representing properties, taking access from the street, driveways. I don't remember the exact details, but the 2008 request sounds familiar. I haven't researched that to prepare for anything now, but in order to qualify, there needs to be, for traffic calming, there needs to be at least 600 vehicles a day. Half the people driving need to be exceeding the speed limit, and the 85th percentile speed, or the speed at which the vast majority of people drive at or below, would need to be seven miles an hour or more over the speed limit of 25 miles an hour. Are there a lot of people driving 32 miles an hour on High Street? I don't know. My guess is, from the data, is that there were not at that time.
Thanks. Commissioner Taylor?
So I'm going to start with, I actually, I also agree with Steph, but really, this is a long-term, we're serving a role to provide some guidance and support in terms of a long-term plan. I do think that there needs to be, with this land use long-term plan, transportation. Coming from a neighborhood that has high-density residential right next to the University of Fairmont, we, as a neighborhood, were proactive, but what was happening is land use was happening and transportation wasn't, so the neighborhood was being dramatically impacted. So we were very proactive in terms of traffic calming, providing applications, but the burden was really on the neighborhood, so I think for us to, to plan responsibly, we really need to not only look at land use, but if you, most of this testimony embedded in it has concerns of traffic and parking, so traffic and parking are a parallel planning process, so I, I really want to emphasize that because I do think this is long-term, and if traffic isn't addressed in some codified form, whether it's in a different chapter or at least the intent, then there is a good possibility that as development happens over time, the goals that were, were well-intentioned today will not happen because of that impact. So, so I actually would like, love to see traffic calming, not only on the High Street, but addressing that, looking more closely once again at traffic and what this land use impact will have on traffic and look at that parallel planning process. So now specifically in terms of High Street, I actually love parking on both sides of the street, and I'll admit that I cut through, and I have been on that street and traffic slows way down. It's like Emerald, all the various, if you go to these neighborhood cut-through, when they have two-way streets, it's a tremendous traffic calming device. So I think it's viable and I'm willing to keep it if there is something more proactive or intentional in terms of other traffic calming devices, but if that isn't going to happen, I actually would propose, and it looks like G, for instance, it actually reduces that 54 by eight feet, by, excuse me, four feet. G has eight and seven, so I almost would consider doing that on all these potential streets that have the potential for cut-through. Just allow for a natural traffic calming in case traffic doesn't actually keep up with the needs.
Other comments? Commissioner Jorski?
Yeah, you haven't asked yet, but I also, based on what I heard about other non-regulatory items probably never being feasible, I kind of feel that I'd like to go with option three in a G topography myself. I, I think that that, since we're not seeing a lot of transition happening here and that wouldn't really change a lot except what the topography recommendation is in the plan, I think that would go a long way in this neighborhood that's probably going to be slow to develop.
And I'll jump in and put my vote in for parking on both sides of the street, too. I think it's.
Okay.
It is one of those natural calming things that just kind of tightens it down and I think might achieve that without a whole lot of other issues.
Commissioner Mills?
And I, I'll jump in here, too, just to chime in and say, I, I would also support parking on both sides for a number of reasons, traffic calming being a very good principal reason why, and I also want to kind of back up and support Commissioners Taylor's suggestion that we look at type G. I think it's currently type I, is that, no, sorry.
Well, I think it was, it's, it's currently type J. It was requested by a couple of the neighbors to be just consistent type I because the, the other street.
Yeah, well, that's too wide, isn't it?
They're both too wide, type G and type I are wider than the current right-ofway.
Yeah, when, when we say too wide, again, back to, touch on the fact that.
G is closer, though.
G is closer.
G is closer, and, and the typology is reflecting a future condition, that means we need additional right-ofway, just to be clear.
No, I understand, yeah, I understand.
But what I'm hearing is a majority, at this point, would prefer to switch it to G. We can, we've got that captured.
I just, to reiterate, that's my, I thought type G would have been parking on both sides. I do agree with Commissioner Taylor, though, that we need to codify some of these transportation issues somewhere. Drop, and also so lax, and so, you know, impose something that was not intended, and I think we should consider that, too, for the sidewalk leashing in some of these areas as well, and how we handle paving alleys and so forth.
So, at this point, in the interest of time and wanting to get some of the discussion underway in regards to parking requirements, I'm going to suggest that we actually jump ahead in the agenda a little bit, if that, jump to parking, if that's possible, at least to start the. Well.
Rezoning, that last.
I mean, it's just a suggestion. Parking is a pretty substantial topic, and we could defer that to the next meeting entirely. Robin, do you have a preference there?
Well, you might as well. I mean, it's going to take some time to work through that one anyway.
Okay, okay, so with that, I guess we'll just continue, at this point, we're, I think we have clarity on the, the High Street typology change, and, and moving to the next related topic, it has to do with.
Can I interrupt, I saw it, Commissioner Duncan, with a comment at least.
Just a quick comment on the parking, the, the street design pages.
Sure.
I think it'd be great if you, a lot of them, you have the, the width, it shows like 74 feet right-ofway, it'd be great if all of them showed that, so somebody reading F, G, H, and I have those numbers.
Yeah, and I think that it was intentional not to have that travel lane width indicated as compared to Willamette and 29th.
I was talking about the right-ofway, so you can see the whole pattern.
Full right-ofway width.
So you understand what the travel lane becomes?
Yeah.
I can do the arithmetic.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys.
Okay.
Thanks.
So do we want to look at the rezoning as far, is this, as far as the SDUs?
Right, right, so, still looking at the sort of SFO area, Mil High, Ferry Street area, you know, there were, were some comments we heard about wanting additional flexibility to add SDUs, for example, without triggering the new standards, and, and some concern about the AC subdistrict right along 29th and potentially lowering that designation to SFO RA, so.
We've got both sides of the argument on that, though. Property owners on 29th have submitted testimony in favor of that. Some people off of 29th have objected to that.
Yeah, so.
So the property owners along 29th have submitted testimony for the apartment condo?
Yeah, I think there's general support among, among the owners that face 29th for the upzone, and I think the concern we're hearing is really from the adjacent single-family areas and, and that transition again, yeah.
And they're leaning, seem to be leaning more toward SDUs, allowing those.
Well, that was sort of a, an additional topic, not focused on 29th specifically, but folks in the SFO subdistrict generally wanting more flexibility to do SDUs without bringing the full new code into effect, basically.
Yeah.
Comment? Okay.
Okay, first of all, adjacent to, to single-family residential, if, especially if it's in the metro plan, I would love to just see, once again, look at the transition similar to what we discussed in Portland. The other suggestion or question I have, actually, and I didn't quite get your option two, I read the testimony that related to it, so you're saying, allow us to use and additional units? What are, what's the distinction between the two of those?
Well, if you were in current, what's currently R1.
Yeah.
Like, one of the testimonies we got was on Ferry Street, and so they're currently zoned R1, and they currently have a planned designation of low-density residential. The proposed zoning is for apartment condo. One of the, they would prefer to stay R1, and they're planning to live in the residence, but one of the suggestions that they made was that could you continue to add units to the existing either residence or as an SDU unit without triggering the apartment condo code requirements? So currently, the way it's written is that if you add additional units to your property, you have to meet all of the apartment condo standards, which includes density standards. So it basically either, if you're going to add units, it basically makes you build, rebuild as an apartment condo, it's basically requiring you to redevelop the property, where option two would give you the ability to add additional units in, in whatever configuration, you know, we want to discuss, but that it wouldn't necessarily trigger you immediately into apartment condo redevelopment.
So really, the difference then between SDUs and additional units, SDUs are separate from the structure. SDUs are separate from the structure, additional units are within the existing structure?
Yeah, that's a nuance within the wording there, but I think the intent was really about detached SDUs or additional units within an existing structure, right.
Got it.
But the point being, the trigger for compliance with all the new requirements of AC, including density. So in other words, you wouldn't necessarily be able to do one additional unit, you may have to do, you know, more significant redevelopment project right out of the gate. So that incremental, that desire for incremental addition of units is something we wanted to put in front of the group.
Okay, thank you.
I've got myself in the queue, and I guess my question would be, I'm intrigued by the idea of the incremental development. I'm trying to remember, when we did the single-family code amendments, what I'm remembering is SDUs do not, we don't count those in the density? Is that right?
Correct.
So a single-family house with an SDU is still considered one dwelling unit on that lot?
Right. However, the triggers for, that are proposed in this code for SFO really hinge on the addition of new dwelling units, and so that's, I think that's a key factor that, so-
And I had an issue with that when we were doing the single-family amendments, too, because it seems like you've got two dwelling units. And I mean, you can call them what you want, but you've still got two dwelling units and you're still achieving a little higher density, which I think is good, generally in a smaller, more residential character, too. And so I guess that's, that's something that intrigues me about that option, as far as are the lots large enough to meet SDU standards under our current revised code that we did? And might that be a good kind of interim transition thing to consider? So I'll just throw that out, being intrigued. Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I like that idea, too, with sort of the caveat that I can't just keep adding one and one and one and one and one and one and one.
Right.
Right, you could put some limit.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If there was a limitation that said, if I put on an SDU and then all of a sudden I wanted another one, then maybe it, or a different type, then it constitutes a change and falls under the requirements. But I do like the idea because that type of additional unit starts neighborhoods getting used to slight more density, and that makes sense to me. And a lot of these lots are very small. I would-
Sounds like they happen faster, too.
It might happen faster, but again, I'd want to make sure that the size wasn't such that, again, it's just, I can add one, add one, add one, and add one. I think there needs to be a limitation. If I can only total three under zoning, then two seems okay to me, some, some way to figure that out.
So if we got a majority, I think that we can look at writing in an exception that's kind of honed in on SDUs and perhaps just one, you know, as something that wouldn't trigger the standards in a full-blown way and sort of get at that incremental allowance, but be specific to detach secondary dwelling units or something pretty nuanced, that's not just dwelling unit or not, but it's focused on that actual housing type?
Yeah, because at some point, you almost get to sort of the cottage cluster.
Right.
At what point, is that what I'm really doing, but I'm doing it one at a time or something like that?
Right, and we can look at that incremental piece to make sure that we're not just allowing that, it's kind of serial addition of units.
Right. And I also have Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Jaworski and Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of the incremental approach. And just to clarify, I think there's a, there's a lot size limit on SDU, so you can't do it on a really small lot, which is essentially the, sort of the density limit way, it's another way around it. So there is sort of a, it's not a density limit, not regarded. And the other thing about that is, if this were applied, would it, would it only apply in this area? That's another question, is whether that incremental approach would make sense elsewhere as a way of transitioning, if you can add one SDU, you know, attached or detached to your existing. That might still allow development without major, you know, because as Commissioner Duncan has suggested, a lot of the redevelopment here will really only happen until you acquire a lot of lots, at least a couple or two or three adjacent. So obviously, that may take years to do, so you might want to, some interim development, even if you own that building or whatever, so.
Yeah. So to clarify, I think staff's recommendation would be to bring back an option that looks at all the SFO areas, not just this particular area around High Street as, you know, I think a comparable set of standards and to allow that sort of incremental approach, I think we could expand it to address the triggers for the SFO sub-district as a whole, so.
Yeah, I like what Gabe said. I just want a clarification. The SFO sub-district would not include those SFOs that allow row houses and stuff like that? It would only be pure, the light-colored here, SFO? Not, not the ones with the hatch marks that's, they can put?
No. Well, I mean, that's, I guess, I'd leave that to the commission's discretion.
I personally would not like the ones on the street to change. I would like to see those be either rowhouse characteristic or whatever, and only the other-colored SFO have that option, but that's how I feel.
I just, the question is to staff, then, the way I understand it, this is rowhouse allowed, not required.
Right, right.
Well, this, I mean, where it's been requested is-
Well, what I just suggested in terms of clarifying the trigger to allow an additional SDU, the intent, at least just on the fly here, would have been to address all SFO areas, including rowhouse allowed areas, as an incremental approach. In other words, it would apply to the whole SFO district regardless of overlay, so. We can change that if there's, you know, there's a clear direction from the commission, but I'm just suggesting something we'll bring back for action at the next meeting.
Sounds like I'm hearing Commissioner Jaworski say that he's not in favor of putting that everywhere.
Right.
I think let's bring it back and then discuss that.
Okay.
And we can decide how we want to do that. Commissioner Taylor?
I just want to say that I'm actually a proponent of the direction you're suggesting when you bring that back, that applies to all SFO. The other thing I wanted to encourage you to look at is more than two units. So I think it could be interesting to maybe look at three, for instance. I'm just thinking of San Francisco, some other cities where I've seen transition where they have an accessory dwelling, but that front building might be two units. So it does allow transition, you still have existing structures, so in many ways, I'm a proponent also because of sustainability. So if they can use that a little longer, granted, it's not getting built, but at least you're not having a stagnant undeveloped, or property that's going to stay in transition waiting until it's either got a developer that can afford it or move forward. So, something to consider.
Something we can bring back. I mean, we'll bring back the option of one additional unit, but with the understanding that we'll discuss that and whether it should be expanded or narrowed.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I think we're at time. Commissioner Baker?
Quick question, too. I'd appreciate it of staff. I'm a little concerned about the 29th, the layout of the lots there and the rowhouse car, obviously, they go the wrong way in the way, rowhouses. See how that could be, how you could take one lot and develop a rowhouse on it, given that narrow depth and parking without adding a bunch of-
I think that's why we have a two lot depth all along that frontage, with the understanding that the orientation would change.
Right, but that's where I see where you have a problem, because if you can't acquire, if a developer can't acquire the two lots that are back-to-back, it doesn't help that they own the, you know, some of these are, these two blocks are owned by, some of these are owned by the same developer along 29th, but not the lot adjacent.
I think to a certain degree, you'll have that issue most anywhere in this special area zone.
But the only reason I raise that is because that way, if you did allow an SDU, it would be some incremental development potential, if, because of the difficulty of land acquisition, it takes quite a long time to acquire the properties to make it into a, as much as I'd like to see it in rowhouses, I just think the likelihood of that happening is a challenge.
So you'd support doing the SDUs, all of the SFOs?
Yeah, I think so, because I think it gives you a little bit of a, you know, incremental growth until, you know, until you have a situation where you could acquire the properties that are needed for it.
We're at time.
We are.
And you want to see if there's other items from staff? None, none today. And other items from commission, I have one.
Commissioner Jordan?
What?
Commissioner Jordan? Excuse me, guys.
Oh, I thought you adjourned.
No, I didn't. We're doing additional items from commission. I just wanted to make everybody aware, if you haven't got the email from Zach, that Jeff Speck will be speaking at the Holt Center studio, I think, Wednesday evening, 5:30. It is free. I think you do need to register, though, because it's limited, but I've read his Walkable Cities book and highly recommend it as a good read. So I'll throw that out there. Any other items from commission?
I just wanted to remind you guys, I won't be here for the next two Mondays. I'll be back for deliberation.
And I think we're not going to deliberate again until July 6th also.
Right, just a reminder, we'll be, we'll be back on the 6th and, as promised during the discussion today, we'll be bringing back additional materials and hopefully continuing the discussion with parking requirements, so.
All right. Commissioner Jordan?
Thanks, Mr. Duncan.